You ready?
Yeah.
No.
I might be a little late. Okay, so then. Work session meeting called to order. Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Councilmember Warner?
On his way.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
There will now be a statement by mayor and council.
Yes, before we go to the silent prayer and moment of reflection, we all know within the past week, there's been several tragedies throughout the United States. One right here in Asbury Park on Springwood Avenue, one in South Carolina. This is getting out of control, out of hand, and we felt... As far as where we stand on these, and Yvonne will be gracious enough to read it.
It is with profound sadness that we, the mayor and city council, offer our heartfelt condolences to the children and extended family of Tamara Sidell. Tamara was an excellent mother, a friend to be trusted and relied on, a faithful employee and devoted member of the Mount Carmel Catholic Church. She was loved and will be missed. In response to the unthinkable tragedy in South Carolina, we send healing energy and comfort to the surviving relatives and members of the Emmanuel AME Church in Charleston. This horrific act has demonstrated that hate cannot defeat love, and brotherhood can triumph over racism. As a society, we must reexamine both our gun control laws as well as our ability to identify and effectively treat individuals exhibiting poor mental health. Most importantly, we must stand together today and every day. We must remember that what unites us is greater than what separates us. The work of healing, the responsibility to prevent, and the necessity for change falls on us all.
Thank you.
Please.
Go ahead. Jesse?
Yesterday, I had, it wasn't really an opportunity, but I had a chance to meet with the family. And I tried to express to them how much we cared about them, the city of Asbury Park, and our prayers. And I tried to emphasize to them that you have to stay together. And believe me, they were so humble. I mean, it almost brings tears to your eyes how humble they were. And they were so thankful that the council cared about them. And I explained to them that we, you know, it'd be a time where we're gonna make a presentation to them, a verbal presentation to them. But just being there and seeing them made them feel so good. And they asked me to thank each and every council member. And we tell them we love them, and we continue to pray for them. Thank you.
Please stand for a moment of silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 2, 2015, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are in file with the city clerk.
Okay, the first matter on the agenda is the city manager comments and follow-up regarding the regular session of Wednesday. A concern expressed about a property in the 500... The posters down before the weekend. Secondly, there was a complaint about work being done at the former Salvation Army building at 205th Avenue. The... ...on Sunday morning. ...and Johnny Mac... to develop the Springwood Avenue corridor. I assured them that I'd be willing to meet with them again, along with council members, if in fact they're able to bring a developer to the table. Kevin, one?
Yes. About a month ago, a resident approached us with a public health concern concerning standing water at the Esperanza site on Ocean Avenue between Ocean and Kingsley. I'm happy to report that I-STAR has replaced the water pumps. And with each storm, as that area fills up with water, they will pump it out. It's currently being pumped out at this time.
Second matter...
Highlighted in the...
...read for you are recommendations from the Department of Public Works to increase the number of the fees that they charge for their services.
And these are in line with what other towns charge?
That, I really don't know, to tell you the truth. I know that some of the fees that we charge were pretty much on the low side. I don't know, John...
Well, years ago, we used to try to stay within what FEMA recommended as far as reimbursement. So I'm sure Robert did the same thing. These were good.
I don't, I didn't...
We'll make that change. Anything else you have questions?
Or before you make that change.
...the 1200 block... This is a revisit of the...
You guys say this is what it should be?
Thank you, Yvonne. Thank you very much. I think this is better, too. Thank you.
And as council will recall, you tabled the former version of ordinance 2015-28, and the new version is in your packets for consideration for first reading on Wednesday. It's been updated to incorporate the revisions requested by the deputy chief.
Cool.
The third item on your agenda is Christine Ballard, our city engineer from T&amp;M Associates, who'll present on the boardwalk lighting project and emergency generator for the wastewater treatment plant.
What I'm looking for this evening is an authorization to advertise bids to the boardwalk lighting project. As you know, or may not know, the city has a grant in the amount of $900,000, a little over, for new boardwalk lighting. At this point, the cost estimates have been revised based on a meeting that was held with I-STAR Partners Financial whereby I-STAR has agreed to pick up the difference if, should there be increased costs. There is some additional work that will need to be done with regard to the boardwalk. There's sand removal and such, but that would be FEMA reimbursable, so those items are going to be dealt with separately. And at this point, the Economic Development Association has approved the bid documents. They have given their sign-off to advertise bids, and we're just looking for authorization from you at this point.
Fine with me. Any questions?
Any question? When we met, and we met with I-STAR, and we met internally with our in-house professionals, they were gonna pop open some hatches to see how bad the sand was. Did we do that?
We have not done that, but what we do have is some documentation that I received regarding the boardwalk replacement project that was previously done, so we have a better sense of what the sand removal is going to be, to get a good idea of that cost.
Okay, between now and Wednesday, can we get somebody to pop open a couple hatches just out of curiosity and see how bad it is?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And there is a resolution on the agenda for Wednesday that would authorize the city to bid on this matter.
Correct.
And the second item is, I've just found out that the city has a grant in the amount of $292,000 for a new emergency generator at the wastewater treatment plant. The existing generator is faulty, and what happens with FEMA funding, if it wasn't damaged by the storm, you can't get the numbers under the PW applications, but you can submit a hazard mitigation grant. And an initial application was submitted, and FEMA representatives had advised me that $292,000 has been allocated towards Asbury Park for a new generator. However, there's paperwork that needs to be done in order to finalize that grant. So what I'm looking for is authorization from you so that I can evaluate the generator sizing, put together a proper cost estimate, and complete the application paperwork. And then I'll come back to you with a report of my findings, whether the costs of the grant are in line with the cost of the project.
When did we get the grant?
I found out about it on Thursday.
And so we applied years ago, and we just found out about it now? Or you're just finding it in a mix of paperwork?
I met with, oh, go ahead. I've been meeting with FEMA representatives on a somewhat regular basis, because as I move projects forward, I want them to be in line with what FEMA has in mind, so that they're gonna be reimbursed. And when I met with them, they said, "Oh, by the way, what are you doing with the generator project?" And I said, "Well, I didn't know about a generator project." So this was news to me, however, I think some of there, there had been talks of it from others.
There was talk about this right after Sandy. And we talked about the issues of several different generators that might be needed throughout the city, in various locations. And I think, Kevin, you were, you know, part of the application process?
Yeah. Okay, so just so I understand, so there were talks after Sandy, somebody did the paperwork, and then that was it? It was dead after that? Just so I understand how this works?
What happened, the former city engineer put in the application, and when pricing came back, the estimates that came back were, don't hold me to this, but it was approximately $150,000 to $200,000 more than the grant would cover.
Okay.
And the decision was made at that time that we couldn't afford to do it.
Okay. But now we have an increase in the grant? Because it sounds like if it's, or is it, there is no, is there an increase in the grant?
I don't know the timing of what happened, but the grant was increased. I don't know if you recall that the Hoboken mayor, way back when, wanted a reallocation of funds? And when they reallocated funds, Asbury Park was allocated additional funds. But unfortunately, I don't know the history of all of this as what the original funding allocation was.
Okay. Fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Christine, thank you. Right, number four on the presentations. Randy Thompson is here to address the council regarding decriminalization of the use of cannabis.
Hello, mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council. Randy Thompson with the Help Not Handcuffs campaign to remove arrest and coercion from people who use substances and those with substance use disorders. The request is to have our city council introduce and pass a resolution that states the harms of prohibiting marijuana and calling on our elected state and federal officials to legalize the substance. And I prepared the fact sheet, which gives some Asbury Park specific information coming down from the federal and state data that we know of the specific harms that prohibition causes, not the use of the drug, but prohibition causes. We know that arrest for petty possession of marijuana enters a person into a cycle of arrest, fines, possible incarceration. It really engenders a disability, where they will have a hard time getting a job, making their way through this world, getting student loans, housing, et cetera. We do know, unfortunately, that there is a racial disparate impact in arrests, that African-Americans, despite using it at similar rates from Caucasian Americans, are arrested almost three and a half times more than their Caucasian counterparts. In Monmouth County, that's even more intense. They're almost arrested 4.7 times more. In addition to that, migrant populations can have their legal protected resident status removed if they're caught with petty possession. There is an exemption for a small amount, but if they get caught a second time, they could have that status removed. Someone who's applying for legal protected status and makes a poor decision, they could be deported. And again, the hallmark of the war on drugs and prohibition is that it has never stopped any drug from getting into the hands of a kid or an adult, and it has caused a lot of harm all the way around. We do know that a lot of arrests are made here in Asbury Park. Nearly 10% of our police department arrests are marijuana arrests, so it's a significant issue impacting Asbury Park. African-American population is nearly 50%. There's a 24% of our residents are migrants. And then we do have a lot of vulnerable populations who would benefit from the legalization of marijuana as well, because we do have the state's, the nation's, most restrictive medical marijuana program. And the Coalition for Medical Marijuana of New Jersey, who are really the experts on medical marijuana, have said the established process right now is so difficult that they're only going to be able to get the access that they need for patients who have a valid medical issue if it is legalized and taxed. So really, this request is to take responsibility, to call for taking responsibility for a substance that is out there we don't have any control over, and to replace those criminal actors with legal actors that have an incentive to follow the rules. And then we could finally have a discussion as to who should be using it, when, where, et cetera. And again, just to reiterate, the request is to call on our state and federal officials to act on this, and to the extent possible by law, to express the will of the council that this should be the lowest law enforcement priority for us. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So this resolution is just saying we support decriminalizing marijuana? So what kind of practical effect does that actually have?
Just one clarification. It would be for legalizing and regulating the drug, not just decriminalizing. Decriminalizing would be taking away just the criminal penalties.
Okay.
It would be kind of sending a message saying, "It's okay for you to use this. You won't get into trouble," yet you still have to engage criminal actors. And that really creates a risk for anyone who would otherwise be a law-abiding citizen.
So decriminalizing, regulating, what was the third thing you said?
So this request is to call for legalizing it. That way, we have some form of control, finally. By making it prohibited, we actually cede all control.
And what other states do it?
There's four states, and Washington, D.C. do it right now. That's Colorado, Washington, Oregon, and Alaska. 2016, there'll be about a half dozen more states with ballot initiatives. And analysts are saying by about 2020, we should see a full federal repeal. But, you know, I wanted to bring it to your attention, because it does impact our constituent base a lot. It does tax our policing services and other services as well. I thought this was something that could be of concern. I'm very happy to say that the Asbury Park Democrats supported the effort unanimously, and there's representatives from there here. And, you know, plenty of residents are getting on board with the Help Not Handcuffs campaign as well, so...
But us doing this, it's still a criminal offense.
Correct.
You're still arresting people?
It's...
It's symbolic. It's like we support marriage equality, when we supported marriage equality.
Absolutely. And you will be the leader in the state in doing that, and rightfully so. I think Joe Grillo pointed out, and others who sat in the seats before you had acted, that Asbury Park's been the leader, just like you just mentioned.
And Colorado, Washington, Oregon, and Alaska currently decriminalize, regulate, and legalize marijuana?
Yeah, they have a legal system in place. And Washington, D.C.
And Washington, D.C.
District, yeah.
Of course. Have you had to sit down with the deputy chief to talk about this?
Absolutely.
You guys have occurred?
Yeah, I mean, the deputy chief's right here, so I think he's made a statement to the press publicly about what he has to do. I mean, you may want to ask the deputy chief what is... He's in a professional position, but perhaps just calling on his personal experience outside of his role may...
Right, and like, as you said, and as Amy said, what we're doing is symbolic, and we legally and morally cannot ask our police department to ignore the laws of the state in New Jersey. And, I mean, we cannot break the law, so we legally cannot do that. But I have no problem with the resolution saying, "We support what you want." But again, we cannot tell the police to step down and not do their jobs.
Right, so in administering a police department, there's gonna be some small discussion about what's a priority? Do we want to go and investigate allegations of someone, you know, smoking marijuana on their porch? You know, maybe a neighbor complained? You know, so it's not right in their face, but, and again, that's, if you express the will for it to be the lowest law enforcement priority, that is not binding a assistant chief and...
Right, so the resolution you're just looking for now is like, this mayor and council is supportive of what you said, and it's a symbolic gesture saying, "We support," I support it, like, other states support it. Let's tax it, make some money, and like, get out of the pension debt, let's get out of the state debt, let's get out of everything. So I have no problem with that. But again, legally and morally, we cannot tell the police what to do, and I'm not about to do that. So as far as adopting something like this, I have no problem with it.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Okay, one last question. So just, and I'm curious, I'm just curious. We have two Assembly and a Senator. Do they support, I only say this because we're about to ask for transitional aid, so we're not going to... How do the officials who represent Asbury Park in Trenton feel about it? Do you have any idea?
So Governor Christie has said he opposes it, okay? We have, again, a Senator and two Assembly persons. My understanding is that one definitely opposes it, and the other two may be supportive of it in some way. And I've spoken to other Monmouth County legislators who, you know, are not on the record as of yet, but it's definitely a sense. And it was said, you know, this has to come from the ground up, and that's what we're seeing, the national trend. It's coming from the people, and this is the appropriate course. It would be great if our elected officials just, you know, passed the law, but it's likely that they're gonna have to hear the impact on the ground level, which is what you would be potentially doing.
Yeah, listen, Randy, personally, I don't have any problem with it. I just don't want to annoy anyone in Trenton when we're, you know, requesting transitional aid, right?
We're gonna annoy some people, but that comes with, that comes with history, that comes with reality.
Right.
I mean, in the 1770s, if a bunch of people did dress up as Indians and threw tea over, maybe we wouldn't be sitting here today.
Absolutely.
So sometimes you have to be the first, sometimes. And again, other states have done it. They seem to be fairly successful. I have a couple friends who medically have to take it, and New Jersey has to get into the 21st century.
Thank you, mayor. And just a point on transitional aid. I learned from, you know, serving on the charter study commission, as long as we accept a penny of transitional state aid, by law, we have to look for ways to reduce costs and increase revenue, whether that be by taxes, park meters, et cetera. There's definitely a cost you can cite from this. You say, "Hey, this is 10% of our arrests. If we were to legalize it and tax it, we would be bringing in revenue while being responsible as well."
Is it 10% of our arrests, approximately? Arrest for marijuana, is that approximately 10% of our arrests?
That's a bit high.
That's a bit high, okay, but...
Randy gave us good numbers and everything. I ran them and everything, so whatever it is, yeah.
No questions?
So no, so the question is, like, Fred drawing it up in such a way where we're supportive, but we're not breaking any laws?
I'll have to draw it up carefully, and I'll put it together for your...
And we're not stepping on the police department toes whatsoever, because the police department is the, they're the balls as far as this, so how they enforce it is up to that.
And I'll consult with the deputy chief as I'm drafting this, and I'll bring it back to you for your review and consideration at the next set of council meetings in two weeks.
Is that good?
That's great. Could we have input on drafting the actual resolution?
I'm sure Fred will be in touch with you, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your final presentation for this evening, presented by Mark Steinberg Esquire, the first matter regarding an encroachment issue at 722, 724 Cookman Avenue, and a second matter in regards to a draining easement at 205, 209 Bond Street.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Mark Steinberg, on behalf of two different applicants. 722, 724 Cookman Avenue is the point shop and the checkation facility. And we received planning board approval to renovate the second floor, and we will have three apartments and/or condos, if we haven't decided at this point. And all of that has been approved. The only issue before you, and I'm not sure it's an issue, and I'm not sure if it needs any action, but there was a requirement by the planning board to notify you of the situation. We will have an enclosed trash area in the rear of the property. It will have gates, if you can see this, will have gates that open outwardly onto the alley, which is a city right of way. So the planning board asked us, as part of their resolution, to notify mayor and council that the gates will open out. They will be closed, and trash not be taken, and probably by a private party. Private party? Private party, and will be enclosed.
So the planning board okayed this, you just had to bring it to us?
Yeah, I don't think we need an easement. Only when it's open is it on your property. When it's closed, it's not on your property. This will also clean... This will also clean up part of that right-of-way, which runs parallel to Cookman Avenue. The alley also goes across, runs parallel to Main Street, where Brando sort of uses our area. This will no longer be available to Brando, it's going to be enclosed for the use of the stores and for the three tenants who are residents in our building. And, you know, there's not sufficient room in the back to do anything other than to open out. We can't open it and have the trash container shut.
So, Yvonne, you're on the planning board.
Yep.
So you had no problem with this?
No problem with it at all.
Okay, next.
Yeah, I understand when the doors are open, the gates are on city property. I don't, I don't think it's an issue that is any different than possibly a door opening out onto the sidewalk.
How often are the gates open?
When the trash is out.
Yeah, two or three days. Maintain it as closed, otherwise, we don't want other people using the trash container. That's an issue.
Did, when you went to the planning board, and maybe you remember, did they say what time your trash pickup should be?
Yeah, I think we have between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., or something to that effect.
Between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.? That's a, that's a long day. I was hoping it was like, between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. Okay.
So just so I'm clear, though, wouldn't you want to have an easement from the city?
Sure.
So that, that way, you know, through the years, there would be no question that whoever owns the property would have that...
Absolutely. That's a very good idea.
So if the city, it's amenable to it, then in order to authorize the granting of an easement, we can do that to an adjacent, to an adjacent property owner. We'd have to draw up an ordinance, and that would authorize the mayor and municipal clerk to execute an easement agreement that would then be filed and recorded with the Monmouth County Clerk's office, and it would run with the land, basically.
Yes, I understand. It is, no, it doesn't hurt us, it would probably enhance our property.
Okay, and the only thing, and you probably don't know about, but you know about, we passed a resolution, where then it's like, anything comes before us about something like this, you pay for.
escrow, et cetera.
Escrow.
Escrow with the planning board, I guess, which we...
So they've already posted money with the city in connection with the planning board application, so any work I would have to make sure...
Now, you're going to have to draw up a resolution, so they have to reimburse you.
Correct. So I would have to communicate with the finance office and make certain that any billing that's done on this property would be drawing against the escrow account.
And that was something we did with everybody a couple of months ago, so I wasn't sure if you're aware of it. Okay, thank you.
But the answer is if this mayor and council are not here in five or 10 years, then this would be in perpetuity with the property, generally.
Okay, no problem.
Let me know what you need.
Absolutely.
The other matter before you is on Bond Street. Bond, it's called Bond Street Alley, it's also a planning board matter. It's received approval. This is property... This is the property that's located to 203, 205, 207, 209 Bond Street. And it's being renovated into residential on the top, the second and third floor, the two buildings, which have been consolidated as one block on the tax map. And the first floor is going to be commercial and possibly a restaurant. Planning board has approved it. I believe there's been three iterations of the design. Four stories at one time, and then two, and now it's, it's been approved. If you're familiar with the property, there's an arcade between the two properties, and open, which actually was used, as we have researched, by the theater, I guess that was Savoy?
Correct.
Savoy Theater, to bring their staging or scenery in and out of the building many, many, many years ago. The arcade will remain. And beneath the arcade, there is a pipe, which leads from a manhole off of our property in the rear, where all of the properties probably drain into, including the Savoy Building, whatever it's called now, McKinney Building, into an underground, goes into a manhole, underground, underneath our property, out to Bond Street, into another manhole, and then it takes a right-hand turn down towards, underneath the street, down towards Wesley Lake. As part of a requirement of the planning board approval, they've requested that the city do, does grant an easement, or we grant an easement to the city, permitting the city, in the event of an emergency, to come onto our property and dig up that pipe if necessary, if it is causing some sort of problem behind us. We have researched this, and it's gone back about 120 years, and we cannot find any recorded easement or any right to have anybody have a pipe running through our property. But it's there, and it's an existing drainage system, which was probably done 200 years ago. And we're going to leave the pipe there, the easement, and I'll send it over to council when they have a chance to review it. Basically, it permits the city in an emergency to come in and repair it if necessary. However, the city takes no responsibility, no requirement to do so, if they don't want to do so, and they will not be obligated, or the property owner and possibly those behind would be obligated to pay if the city should commit an emergency. But the planning board wanted some sort of easement granted to the city, permitting this to happen in the event of a catastrophe.
Well, I'm confused, because this is the same easement that the city was just throwing out of, and we had to like, go through holy heck to get cablevision, everything else, run down Bond, up Cookman, down Main Street, so...
Well, it's totally different. What was happening was running through, those systems were running through this building, through the building. And they had to be removed because you couldn't build. That was that. This is something that we're granting to the city in the event of an emergency. For instance, if this property's behind us, and that would be to the west, would be backed up, there would be a drainage catastrophe from the McKinney Building roof and everybody else that drains into this manhole, it should be blocked inside, underneath our arcade. The city has the right to come onto our property and repair it. We're granting it to you.
Right, this is the exact opposite of the last request.
Why would we go onto private property and repair private property?
In the event, the planning board has required in the event of a catastrophe or an emergency, that the city has the right to come onto our property to do it. It also provides in here that the city will be reimbursed in the event that you do it on our property.
What was the context that the planning board required that?
The planning board required that because it is an existing drainage system for the properties to our west.
Was there just like a general review? Like, how did this come to light? Like, what prompted it to be from the planning board?
The city engineer was aware of this drainage system and the existence of the pipe, and requested it as part of the review. And then that would be from inside engineering, which is the planning board's engineer, not the city engineer. But if, if I want to give it...
It doesn't require the city to do anything. It's at our discretion.
It's an existing system that is in place probably for 200-plus years. And if there is a catastrophe to the west of our property, this would, in an emergency, would give the city the right to come in and repair it.
Although inconceivably, wouldn't we go and repair it?
In normal circumstances, we would not be involved, since it would be our private property. But in case we did have to go on because of any catastrophic type of situation, we would have that easement. I don't, you know, I don't believe the city has any requirement to do so, and if we provide specific language, Mr. Servico requested, because the city has the right, but not the obligation. And all, that was, that was the wording that was used. And that in the event that the city did so, they can charge us back, but of course, we could go back to our neighbors in the back and seek reimbursement if it's caused by somebody behind us. But I don't think the city is out anything by granting this, and probably gives the city in the event of an emergency, the ability to come in. I mean, it would be a catastrophic incident, but all the properties at the rear would be flooded, I guess. There would be no harm having the easement to it.
Right, yeah, it's like an op-ed thing. I just wondered if there was other cases of it?
When you open up a planning board, their site plan, they'd like to get, if they can, the ability to correct things that should have been placed by easement many, many years ago, and we're just complying with that.
Okay.
And likewise, I would prepare an ordinance, and I already have the draft easement document from Mr. Steinberg. We'd bring this back to your attention at the next council meeting, and we'd start the process with an introduction and adoption of an ordinance, and then we'd record the easement with the county clerk's office.
And same thing escrow?
Same thing escrow.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next matter on your workshop agenda is a review of agenda items for your June 24 regular meeting. Any questions or concerns about your regular meeting?
Yeah, in a, in a, in a second. So I see there's a new agenda, and number four of the old agenda, Broadby Business Development was taken off. Where's your presentation?
Sorry?
Well, when we got to workshop agenda...
Nice workshop agenda. All right, we got a call today, we can make it tonight.
Well, tell them not to make it again until we have, let's have a committee, because I don't even know what this is about, and this is going to be another thing where, do they have money in escrow? Because you typed up a lot of legalese things that we were going to adopt Wednesday, now they canceled out, and this is running up the city's meter, and I don't even know who they are, I don't even know what they want to do, but they want to do something for free, which I'm going to vote no. So, I mean, it's like...
Be in touch with them tomorrow.
Yeah, and, but before they come before us, can somebody like, can we have like a committee meeting or something? I mean, I just don't want somebody to pick up the phone and say, hey, can we come make a presentation to mayor and council and waste your time, and you're going to vote no anyway? Or, hey, can we come make a presentation, you may vote yes, but without some more background on this? I mean, this is somebody who wants to put in like, I think...
Fiber out.
Fiber. I mean, I would think there's probably 100 other companies out there. So do we have all 100 companies come and make presentations?
Only if they want to come in, try and...
Well, I mean, only if they want to come in. I don't want to waste my time with 100 companies. So, I mean, again, I mean, it was very hard for me to understand. I had multiple questions, there was multiple things in the package, but again, Fred, you drew up...
I didn't, just so you know. Those documents are form documents that were provided by the applicant.
Well, they were terrible form documents.
Yeah, no, I didn't...
And I'm trying to like, equate it to like, a cellphone company. It comes in and says, guess what, we'll give you $100,000 to put a cellphone transmitter on top of your high building. But this company just wants to come in and reap the rewards and charge future people down the road, yet Esberry Park was getting zero. So stuff like this, before it gets on the agenda, I hope, you know, just run it by and see if we even want to... We want to listen to anybody and everything, but again, if it was something like, we're going to have to go out RFP, RFQ, because there's 100 different companies out there, I don't know what to do.
I certainly think you could vet this before bringing it to the council level, perhaps with the city manager and anyone else.
Okay.
Less than a quorum of you who might want to attend a committee meeting and then bring it to mayor and council. I do know that the same request from the same company has been made all over the state to all the towns. So they're, they're making the same request everywhere.
Right, but am I wrong, there's more than one company in America that does this?
They all have to be approved and get the consent of the BPU.
Right, but there's more...
But yes, there are more than, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so where are we at? On, can somebody just, yeah, questions on the agenda?
Review the agenda.
I have a question, that somebody wants to go first.
Go ahead, maybe you like some...
Okay, let's go to 201, 5-246. Amending temporary appropriations. Sewer Utility Operating Fund bond principal, why is it such a large increase? And if we don't have any answers tonight, I know Ricky's up here, I have no problem with that, but I mean, it's a million-dollar increase. And it may just be something that's due, so, okay. Next one, 201, 5-247. This is, has to do with the Altam surplus property. I thought we had more, and what I don't notice, it may not be any big deal, there's no minimum bids on here, but on the ad, there will be minimum bids?
Okay.
Yes?
So there won't be minimum bids on the ad, because you don't, when you put it onto go deals, there's always a minimum on certain items, but you don't advertise that minimum.
Oh, okay.
So there is a minimum, we won't allow it to happen. So if somebody bids less, they'll get a rejection, but you don't advertise a minimum.
That's smart, thank you.
And we do have more, all right, but this is just going to be the first 14 items.
Okay.
These were the best.
Good, thank you. And thank you for all your hard work. 201, 5-248. I guess, I guess this is from Cindy, I guess this is, just makes it easier on her instead of doing it every meeting.
It was a form resolution that she had from one of her prior municipalities. This way, all of these types of licenses don't have to come before mayor and council and clock up agendas. But you don't have to approve that, it's at your discretion.
No, 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 I have no problem, but I was just trying to figure out.
So I'm taking the resolution out about the right-of-way with the Cross River fiber, right? That's...
That's all.
I have one about 249, can someone just refresh?
Well, yeah, I have explained it, now I can't even find it, so, go ahead.
I just, it wasn't, it's very vague, I wasn't, remembered what it was in reference to.
249?
The grants.
All right, with Sunset Avenue, this is the four-way stop, the three-way stop sign? Oh, no, the grant appropriation, all right, this is for the paving, or it's going to be for paving.
Of the fourth?
Of Sunset Avenue.
For some reason, I can't find 49. Do you have 49?
Yes. That's what I wanted to list.
Thank you.
This was from Christine Ballard, from T and M.
Okay, yeah, my question was the same as Joe Zissick's plana. So then, 250. Yes, 250. Okay, boardwalk lighting, we already talked about. And my question was, what happens if it comes in overcross? And Christine Ballard said, I started to be picking up the overcross?
The overcross.
Okay. And the next one was on Cross River, and that's been taken off the agenda, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions about the agenda?
I just had a question, because I missed the presentation by the deputy chief. The, on Monroe, that 158 feet or whatever, how far does that go down? Does that go down around the Boys and Girls Club, or?
No, it just went for the school.
Just past the school.
Past the school.
142.
142, that was it, okay. I just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you. That was it.
That's it.
Yvonne?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Again, on 201, 5-245.
Bills and claims. There's bills and claims, okay.
Page 12. And this is just a question from my own edification. We have a grant fund budget? And is that just a compilation of all the grants that the city has received?
Yes and no. If you see a G in front of it, it's coming out of a grant.
G's a grant.
So, so, yeah, it's a grant fund budget, and all these underneath them are coming out of different grants. It could be police grants, fire grants, it could be clean communities, recycling.
Okay, so they're kept in separate funds?
Right.
Okay.
And then further back, there's a, I can't think of the other code letter, T or something with it.
T's for trust.
T's coming out of a trust fund, such as escrow accounts.
Okay. All right. And I know that this is, this is paying bills, but do we have any idea of how much money is in the escrow account for the planning and zoning board?
I'd have to check with Ricky. Now, remember, they have, this came up once before, all right, and we got the numbers, all right, they have several different, all right, escrow accounts.
One for each project.
One for each sponsor, but I was thinking, do we have a total for the number?
Total.
Just another question, debt service, green acres loan payments?
I'll look into those with Ricky, I see it there. I'll look into it with Ricky.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Matters from the city council?
Yeah, I just had two matters. The first was in light of Yvonne's comments earlier and just the traumatic events that happened within communities. We've talked about it a bit in January, when we lost Price, we talked about reaching out to the Monmouth County traumatic lost coalition. They, for example, in Madison Square, when they had all those suicides, set up a drop-in center, and then had teams go out into the community. So, I reached out to them, and they said that they've talked about doing something in Asbury Park, with Asbury Park, so that the next time there is something unfortunate that happens in our community, we would have a team on the ground that could, that could have, that'd be a place, we could find a place, and we could find a team that would be able to go out into the community, or be a place where people can come ask questions, talk about what's on their mind. So, I think, as long as everyone's all with that, we'll continue that process and dialogue, and try to have something set up so that there's a traumatic response team within the city that is ready to go when unfortunate things happen.
Just so you're aware of it, both Doug Schultz and myself, all right, and Rosemary Gackamowicz are part of the response team.
Okay, got it. Yeah, so we have pieces, so just continuing to build on what we have already. The second point was, I know people have asked about volunteer opportunities or things that are just things that we don't always have time to do, so one thing that has come up, our additional recreation programs have filled up, like, within a week, thanks to help from a lot of the community. So, I don't know if there is, this is one thing, if I had more time, I would do, if there are recreation grants, so that our recreation department next year, for example, can sponsor more kids, because we don't have endless funds, so if there is recreation grants out there, that would be something, if anybody wanted to like research that and coordinate with us, we would absolutely, I think, have the kids who want to do those things. So, that's one thing. We're still looking for someone who wants to run the fishing program for the rec department, so a volunteer that's willing to do a training and then, and then run that program. And there was a couple of other grants that have come across that. I would be willing to work with people online, kind of work together and guide through that process. So, that was it, thanks.
Thank you. Yvonne?
No.
Jesse? I have one. Amy?
Yeah, I just have a quick one. Joe and I are on the parking committee. As many people know, we're going to revamp most of our parking system. The system's broken down in a number of different ways, in terms of, you know, permits, one aspect that DPW handles, enforcement's another aspect that Jeanne Delo handles. Maintenance of the machines is another aspect that the company that we bought the machines from handle. So, what the parking committee did was meet with random, just whoever we could get to come, outsourcing companies to find out if we can possibly outsource some of these things, because having them run in three or four different departments in Asbury Park is causing a little bit of confusion. So, what we are recommending and what we're asking the council to support is RFPing, outsourcing our parking. And what we would do is, we would break it down into the four categories, and then in the end, when we pick the RFP, we'll just pick the category. So, using, for example, enforcement. If Asbury wanted to stay in the game of enforcement, AKA ticketing cars, dealing with timing, so on and so forth, we would pull that out of the RFP. If Asbury Park wanted to outsource our maintenance, and for those of you that don't know, we spend an obscene amount of money on maintenance on these meters that you all send me emails and, you know, and I concur, don't work. So, that would be something that we potentially want to outsource, right? So, we're not spending this money. It's not a tremendous amount of money for the city. The way the companies essentially get paid, and I'm going to, you know, put it in very simplistic terms, so I'm not exactly right, but they take, they reform the system and they take a pay from that. So, using enforcement, for example, they would, they would take a cut out of the enforcement above what we make now. So, let's say we make $100,000 in enforcement of the parking meters. After that $100,000, they take a cut from that, because they reform the system to better do the enforcement. So, for example, they made $150,000, they'll take a cut of the 50 from the 100 to 150. Using very, very simplistic terms, in other words, it doesn't cost the city an obscene amount of money, it's relatively nominal to outsource, which we may not even end up doing. The parking committee is just requesting that the council direct Fred politely to do an RFP to start outsourcing the four areas of parking, so we can possibly either outsource everything, outsource part of it, but get it not at three or four different departments in the city.
What were the other two? You mentioned enforcement and maintenance.
Enforcement, maintenance, permits, and there's a fourth, which Joe will get you if I can't, if I don't remember it off the top of my head. Okay, we'll get it for you, and then we'll go out to bid, and whoever comes back with the lowest bid, we'll talk about what aspects of the parking system we want to outsource. This may be something we do temporarily, until we get our own kind of real improved parking system, or it may be something that we decide not to do in the end. But I think we would all like to see bids, so we can start saving some money, at the very least, in terms of maintenance of these machines.
So, is this something that's purely mechanical, where we're looking for the lowest responsible bid, or is this something where we want to have discretion to review the overall proposal and weight them according to certain established criteria, and choose the contractor that we think is offering the best service price and other factors considered?
Correct.
So, that's, that's considered to be competitive contracting that we put out to RFP.
Okay.
So, we would do a resolution authorizing the city to advertise an RFP, and I could have that ready for your consideration on Wednesday.
That would be wonderful.
I think the fourth piece maybe is like management of...
Administration.
Like administration, management of the meters, what the, like, recommendations of council on rates.
Right.
Timing.
And the council has the ability to say no. So, what these companies do essentially is come to town, they rent an office space, and they say, here's what we think your permit should be, based on whatever. Here's where you're not doing any enforcement, you need to beef up your enforcement. Here's where you need to, you know, better utilize the lots that you have for parking. And they make recommendations. Ultimately, we're not taking any authority away from the council, they're just professionals who do this day in and day out, and they'll, they'll make recommendations to us how to better improve the system. And that's one aspect of, I think, improving our current parking situation.
And they actually come in to do it, is the thing. So, they'll do, for example, if we want our residential permitting system, we don't want to run it out of the office, we're doing it, they'll come in, subvert office, or they'll do it online and they'll run it.
This meant that, man.
Is it Amy?
I'm sorry, Jesse was asking me a question.
I said, that's it?
That's it. And obviously, my condolences, I mean, I'm not going to repeat what the rest of the council said, you know, I am as heartbroken as the next person.
Tony? I have no matters. City attorney?
May have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Here, yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from that speaker.
Much to close. Walk quicker.
Is this all? Yes, it is. My name is Joyce Graylin, I'm from Asbury Park, I live in Asbury Park. I truly didn't expect to ever come to a council meeting again, but why I'm here is because of the dog beach. It's not that I want to get rid of it, I just simply want to share it, and so that I feel that it needs to be shared almost half, so that children can play in not urine-soaked sand. And this, you know, it's not just me, you know, we have a petition, which we will hand to you, it's a lot of people feel this way. When people go down to the beach, and in from Asbury Tower, now, we can't walk very far on a beach, we really have trouble, but we do walk, and we walk past the north beach, past where the sign is for the dogs, and go to the other beach. And this is a problem, and they have grandchildren, we have grandchildren that come down there and play that, and we walk them over, because we know that dogs come and pee on that beach, and defecate, and other things. So, we're asking to share it, and even our beach supervisors want to make it different. We'd like to have the entrance of the dog beach at the very north end, put a fence up kind of middle, in the middle of the north beach, and then, you know, have it really confined. It would be so much easier to maintain and take care of, and so I'm imploring you, you've known, I've felt like this, and I've felt this way for a long time. I even gave you a little map, you know, to show you, and I'm sure that if you talk to your beach supervisors, they had some great ideas about how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can I just do one quick response, Joyce? I know you've talked about this before, and it's, it was my understanding, and maybe Joe can correct me, that when we did talk to the beach utility about potentially putting up a fence, it, the problem with the fence was the cleaning of the beach.
Yeah, well, the beach supervisors don't feel that will be a problem.
Okay.
You know, and they're the ones that would know, right?
Joyce, it would go from essentially where the dunes are, east, down to the water?
Not all the way to the water, just, it would be, you know, because then, I'm not sure that would be a good idea, all right? Because then, then the machines couldn't get around it. But they can always go through the north entrance. Do you know what I mean? They can always come through the parking lot and go around to the north entrance. I think, well, is my time up?
Keep, just answer it.
Can I continue?
Go, keep going, yeah.
All right, so, I don't think it needs to be all the way down to the water, it just needs to be a place that they know, that they know that this is where they, they can have, bring their dogs.
Well, who did, just so, and Joyce, I'm only saying it because Joe and I followed up, and we're told that the fence would be a problem. Who did you talk to, Joe or Garrett? Just so we can follow up.
Say that again, then.
So, the, Joe and I followed up on this when we went to the towers, and you guys had concerns, which, again, no problem at all, but you're saying the supervisors don't believe a fence would be an issue, so I'm just asking you who, so we follow up with them.
All right, Garrett Guyerson or Joby?
Done, done, thank you.
Thanks, Joyce.
Okay, I'm Michelle Rachelson, I'm also from the tower. Hi. I have the petition, so I'm going to read it, city manager has a copy. The undersigned are asking the Asbury Park mayor and council to restrict the area of the north dog beach to a more limited space than is available now for the health and benefit of our beaches and citizens. We propose centering the area in front of the fenced dunes. Dogs and animal excrement is one of the main causes of E. coli bacteria in coastal lakes and waterways, up and down the entire eastern U.S. seaboard. Place the dog area far enough away from the north and Eighth Avenue fishing jetties, lifeguard stand area, and beach entrances, so that the growing beach public can enjoy the north beach, and children can dig in the sand without fear of infection or disease. The fishing community can fish in peace and near the jetties without the menace of dogs stealing, urinating, defecating on their bait and gear, et cetera. There has already been a serious physical altercation this season over a dog owner not picking up after their dog at the north beach. Police needed to be called in order to avoid an alter, many altercations last season numerous times. Sinage should include notices of serious fines for not picking up after their dogs. Enforcement of the guidelines should be carried out all the time, every time, and every day, and it should be clearly stated that this is the only dog beach area in Asbury Park all year long. Now, this is my third year speaking about this and coming to council meetings, and there just isn't enough being done. I don't even know if there's any avenues being explored. It's just getting worse and worse and worse. I'd love to know how many tickets have been issued in the past three years for dogs being off the leash without, without a license. I'm sure there's been none, or maybe there has been none, I really don't know, because I never see any enforcement of anything. The dogs are from the convention hall all the way up to the end of Asbury Park beaches. It's gotten to the point where people don't even call it the Fisherman's Beach, the Surfing Beach, a Bathing Beach, it's a dog beach. And it's really, really sad, and it's very unhealthy, it's terrible for the environment, it's terrible for the citizens. I'm really, I'm begging that something be done about this. We have about 100 signatures here, and this is not necessarily Asbury Tower residents, these are beachgoers from other towns, as you will see on there. Thank you.
You can add my name to that one. Okay.
Thanks, Michelle. So, just real quick, two things. One, we'll obviously follow with Joe and Garrett, and then, two, has there been an increased police, like, in the evenings at least, have you seen police there more often?
Well, no, no, no.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, I'll talk to you afterwards about, about that.
What we did do, we met about this preseason, we met with the beach supervisors, we met with, it was transmitted to the police department that we would like the specials to come in earlier to go down there when the dogs were on the beach, 8:00, 8:30, because they're supposed to be off at 8:30. So, that was supposed to happen. We'll look into everything, we'll definitely get together, we'll have a meeting. I don't think any of us up here right now, I couldn't tell you where the dog beach is supposed to be, like, how we can fix it, but obviously, something has to be addressed in fairly, I mean, it's not going to happen overnight, it may take a week or two, but we'll get a meeting together with Joe. When we met with Joe and Gary, they never said anything about a fence to us, so sometimes you people know more than we do, because maybe they don't always tell us the truth, but we'll definitely look into it. And we did try to get more proactive police presence down there to make sure that they're on leashes. I have a friend who lives in your building, and he says, John, you know, my dog Rocky, he's going to get bit because this jackass lets his dog run, and he said, I'm going to hit him, I'm going to hit him. So, I mean, it does happen, and you may know Eddie and Rocky then, okay?
I would like to add one more thing, though, that I did forget.
You got five seconds.
On that entire beach, there is one trash can, not one trash can on that entire beach.
That would be fixed tomorrow.
Thank you.
Maybe we should put one of those, I'll tell you truthfully, I think, I'll get it down the road. What we spend on dog bags compared to any other town in Monmouth County, I mean, I'm going to blow your doors off, your socks off, whatever, I mean, we have so many dog stations, maybe we need a dog station down there with the bags, maybe that will help solve it. There's one up by the parking lot, but maybe there should be one right in the middle of the beach, if that's where all the people with the dogs are. But, well, no, when I take my dog, I buy my own damn bags. I mean, why the public thinks we, you, the taxpayers, should have to provide all these ridiculous costs, I mean, I'm talking about, I'm not talking like hundreds, I'm talking about like $5,000 to $10,000 a year in dog bags the city spends. I'm sorry, go ahead, Rita.
Well, maybe that's a good place to collect the dog licenses, too, that people don't get.
Good point, good point. Give her extra 20 seconds.
I wanted to talk about the code book, you talk about it up there. Most people don't know what that is. I mean, I happen to know about it, because I was on the commission. Don't you think you should have some of the codes out here, so that what you're discussing tonight, like you did, like what Councilwoman Clayton said about the, the two items that she talked about, the debt service and the, the trust funds? I think the debt service...
I think the debt service, I think you know what it is, Mr. Nuccio, you just don't want to say it tonight, but we all know what it is. I don't know if the public knows, but I know. So, I mean, I, I don't think that's fair, that you're discussing code up there and you don't have it, a piece of paper to read to show us what the code is. So, I, maybe you should think about that. I know Nancy knows about it, but nobody else does. So that's one thing. The other thing about the encroachment that, I forgot the lawyer's name was talking about, you know, they're making all these buildings bigger, his building is being bigger, it's attached to Bess's building, and then he mentioned the, the Kimmit Building, that's going from an office building to 64 apartments. So you go from having like 10 bathrooms and you're going to have 64 of them. I, I really should, I think you should think about, and the planning board especially should think about all that before they discuss the sewer line. I mean, like, you should have all these people together. When you're going to put 64 apartments in the Kimmit Building, what's going to happen to the sewer? And he's saying he doesn't want to be responsible for it. Too bad. He's encroaching on everybody else's property, too, go look at it. That alleyway, they better not use that for cars because no car will pass in there, I know that alleyway. It's a, it's a tiny alleyway, and then it has a sewer line in it. Who does he think is going to take care of it? He wants to make his building bigger, fine, it's attached now to Bess's building, and he got approved for that, I'm sure. But, I mean, why should be, why are we responsible for anything they want to do? It's just like the 64 apartments and then his, I don't know what he's building, what is he building anyway? Nobody knows. They put a building on Lake Avenue, do you see where that is? That's a disgrace, that new building. I don't know if anybody noticed it. It's on the sidewalk practically. How does the planning board approve things like that? I mean, I, I don't know what's going on with the planning board, but whoever planned that building ought to be off the board because that doesn't belong there. So, that's a, and I think you should send somebody down to the dog beach. And I, I did see that in the bill resolution, we spent thousands on those bags. Let them bring their own bag. This is not, I mean, they might think this is a welfare station, but it isn't. That's it.
Just so everyone knows, it's, it's not just the dog beach that has bags, there's bags on Sunset Ave., there's bags on Dea Lake Ave., there's bags by Garrett Guyerson Senior, that little park that I'm drawing a blank on its name.
Dog shit park.
I'm not going to say that publicly. All I'm saying is that the, listen, whatever you think about the bags, it's fine, that all the bags are not being used at North Beach, they're bags that we do throughout the city.
Absolutely, citywide.
Yeah, but it's okay, but you know what, if they empty my garbage can and a guy passes with his dog, he drops his bag in my garbage can, and I don't have a dog, and I don't appreciate that.
Why does it, why, oh, okay, okay, we got it.
To get back to your thing and just, we weren't talking about code tonight, we were talking about
Resolution.
A resolution where there's a, I'm trying to think of the term, we're increasing the amount because it's a temporary, we're still working on a temporary budget, so we have to increase the amount to legally keep on operating to our budgets in place. So we were, no, no place tonight when we're talking about the code, or the codification process.
Well, I heard you say something about the 21st century.
Well, something.
I mean, I think you'd better think about reducing taxes and not raising them.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, ma'am, council, Jerry Scram of Long Branch. When you guys, when we were talking about the code book, most, well, we know a lot about the code book and I've learned from her, but I don't know how you can drive up and down Second Avenue and see a nice Corvette with New York plates, with orange combs around it, sits on the street all the time, dust, building underneath the car a half inch thick, and it doesn't have a ticket, and it's never moved by the sweep scraper. It looked like it must be a relative, somebody in the city, off the record. Then the other thing is, on Second Avenue between, I, I just 611 Second Avenue, they parked a car right on the lawn, and when Marshall Signet, no, Marshall, I forgot his last name, when his college boys used to park the cars on the lawn, he used to get summonses all the time, but on Sixth Avenue, on Second Avenue, there's ruts in the front lawn, there used to be a flower garden, and nobody does anything. I mean, you can't just go up and down the street with blinders. If they're going to do a CBO or a title transfer for the house across the street, don't they look at the other houses in the area, or do they just run up the steps and run right back out? Just off the record. Then the other thing is, the, the builder on Lake Avenue, we couldn't believe when they gave all the variances for a moonstruck, when they built the front of their building out to the curb line, because they needed this to make a profit and they were going to be the new business. Well, that new building that they built on Cookman Avenue, what hardship did they have that they could go 20 feet out the, the building line towards the curb? I'd like to know what hardship they had, because that should have never been approved. I could see a porch, maybe, an extra six feet, but they're 20 foot past the building line of all the other buildings. Someone needs to know that that could never happen again, or maybe that should be lopped off the building and set the front back, because when you pull out of the garage, the parking garage door, the first line that you hit is the sidewalk. Normally when you come out of a building, you have a half a car's length to see before you come out. When they come out, you see pedestrians to your right or your left, there's no space for warning either the car or the pedestrian, someone's coming out of the garage. You really don't need to go by, it is definitely a mistake. And whoever did approve it, they need to be gone. Thank you.
Thank you. The 611 Second, and I totally agree with you, anybody, if, be it police, fire, code, anybody, construction, riding up and down the street, see something wrong, they should, no blinders, everything should be addressed, and so, we got a Corvette parked someplace on Second Avenue that we'll adjust tomorrow, we got 611 Second that we'll adjust tomorrow. The building at 603 Lake, I'm going to have to take a ride by and look at myself, just because
The safety happens.
Okay, but as much as like Mr. Steinberg had to come here tonight and get council approval for being on the city right away, if you're telling me that's that far out, they got to be on the city right away. So, I guess that's, we'll look into that, Jared, and Rita, thank you. Arnold?
Mayor? Arnold Fall, Hebrew First Avenue, Esberry Park. Just one question and two comments. With the special events permits, the city code says that they all have to be filed 45 days in advance. So Fred, what happens if council approves things that's a violation of city ordinance?
Council has discretion to modify that, as it
To modify the ordinance?
Council has the jurisdiction and ability to issue special events permits, but technically speaking, that's what the, the code language reads, but on occasion, a permit request comes in that is for an event that's less than 45 days out, so.
Thank you. Just two other things. I did an open request for employees hired since January to June of this year, and it's a little short, which I'll deal with, but out of the 50 employees that were hired, which are probably beach and, and temporary, just so you know, Joe, only 22 are from Esberry Park, which is astonishing, where we have such a high unemployment rate that we can't find more than 22 people to fill 50-some positions down the beachfront. We should be ashamed of ourselves, and we need to correct it. Last year, 27 out of 83 employees on the beachfront, 27 were from Esberry Park. It's a sin, it's a shame, and you should be embarrassed that we get away with this. I also did an open request for take-home cars. We have two code enforcement officers to take cars home with them. I mean, I could see Chief Ketti and Chief Solano and Garrett Guyerson and the people that are necessary to take cars home, but two code enforcement officers get to drive brand-new cars home every day from work? I think we really need to look into that and stop wasting the money. Do what's right for the city, you campaigned on transparency, there is none. Start being transparent, start hiring local labor, and one other thing, Nuch, that was a great thing you did with the park benches over at the Springwood Park, can I get the binocular concession? Because my understanding was it was for the people to watch the kids on the playset, and they're at the perimeter of the park, so of course, who's ever got their kids over there needs binoculars and make sure their kids are safe. Maybe we can correct that, just a minor issue. But, look into this employment, look into hiring, and, and do it right for once, that's all we ask. Thank you.
Let, let me just, I, I agree with you, and I, I'm a advocate of hiring Esberry Park residents, but with the beachfront, and I'm just using that for example because you brought it up, we have lifeguards down there, a guy like Mickey Fidex has been a lifeguard for 50-some years. Mickey Fidex used to live in Esberry Park and 30 years ago moved to Neptune. But he, he, you know, we're looking for Esberry Park lifeguards, there are none, we're trying to start a junior lifeguard program again. We go through the middle school every year, Joe Bon Giovanni does, trying to get people, we work with the Boys and Girls Club, we try to. So some of those jobs where, if those numbers were taken out, the numbers would be far better than what you're reflecting, just because the lifeguards per se, I mean, Robbie Heck lives on Dea Lake Drive, he's a lifeguard. But a lot of our senior lifeguards were born and raised in this town, be it the Burks, be it the Fidex and everything, and then throughout the years moved out and no longer live here. But you're absolutely right, we should do a better job, and we are trying to do that, and we'll look at those numbers, you have better information than I do, so, thank you.
Motion closed public session.
Move it.
All in favor?
I agree.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I can do a few, that's good.